And join me in the pledge of allegiance.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting of January 20th. And please note, we do have two council members absent. April?
Oh, there's Ms. Solis.
Oh, there we go. We have one council member absent. Better. Let her get seated. Our first item on the agenda is items from council. I know that I have a couple, but council, why don't y'all, what you got?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask staff to look into providing a report towards some options regarding Main Street, our downtown historic area, and options that may be available to spur development. I know some regulations things are quite burdensome. Talked to some people that invest in buildings and people that are interested, but there's been some hurdles and see if there's any options to, not bypass safety measures, but any other options to spur development.
Are you also looking for incentives to spur?
That would be fantastic.
Not just the code review, but also incentives?
No, not just the code review, but incentives as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll be glad to.
It might benefit us all to hear a little bit about the code. I still get a little confused about, you know, historical buildings and stuff, so yeah, it might at some point. You have any timeframe?
No, no.
Just whenever, next few months?
Okay. Nothing urgent or pressing, but whenever staff can get to it.
We'll work on it.
Fair enough.
[laughing]
Mr. Alvarez, I know you had something.
Well, just to piggyback on that, get Main Street involved, maybe. They could bring forward some recommendations. And also, to me, it seems like the paper project is not finished. We've done an excellent job with some of the sidewalks downtown, but when you go down the cross streets, those sidewalks need a little help. Hopefully, we'll start looking at that in the near future. Also, I wanted to put a plug in for the Victoria Alliance. Many of you may have heard of it. It's a group here in the community that's doing some visioning, planning, not the city, but their first public meeting is going to be January 24th at the Victoria College Student Center from 10 to noon, and the public's invited. I'm on that committee and wanted to put a plug in there if I could. Also, I'd like to ask, I saw where the police department announced some zone meetings, one's coming up Thursday. If the chief could give us an update on that and the schedule for the other meetings as well?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Yes, this Thursday at 6 o'clock, we were going to implement our first, what we're calling 100-zone meeting. And really, geographically speaking, we break our boundaries up into five different zones throughout the city. We're starting off with 100s, and the basic rough geographic boundaries are Red River to the north, to the south city limits, west city limits, to Laurent. We've kind of, it's a new expanded version of what 100s will look like now. We looked at the call volume, and to, you know, even out the number of calls throughout the city, we had to realign a couple of the zones. So this is our way of introducing that to the public and to also talk about, you know, crime issues, neighborhood quality of life issues that are going on within the different zones that we'll be having. We will do these once a month, beginning, like I said, Thursday, and we'll go to 200, 300s, 400s, and 500s. Take us the next five months to finish. I don't have the exact dates. I don't think we've ironed out the locations just about in every one of them, but this Thursday will be our first one at Hopkins Elementary School. And we'll also introduce the zone officers for the public, and then we'll be there to answer questions and have a dialogue in terms of any type of issues or quality of life issues that the public would like us to be aware of, that perhaps we're not aware of, and then talk about collaborating on how we problem solve.
It starts at 6?
6 o'clock, and we expect it to run until about 8 o'clock. Obviously, everybody throughout the city is welcome to attend, but like I said, we're focusing in on the 100-zone for this particular meeting.
Right, thank you.
Before the chief walks away, I want to comment that, you know, he's been with us now a little over three and a half years, I think, August.
Yes.
Three and a half years. But this is one of the chief's visions when he came into the department and analyzed what the department was doing, was to have more of a community presence, and you see it through our Facebook pages, the baseball card programs, and involvement that the police officers are in, in the community. This is just one more step of that, of trying to get out and make sure the community knows the officers and the officers know the community, so to be commended for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. I hope to attend one of them at least.
We foresee any.
And we will make sure in the future that we'll get those notices out, so you will know when something's in your district, you know, and the location, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counsel?
I'd like to pull D2 and D3.
If not, I have a couple of questions. I had a, I'd like Lynn to give us some information. I had a question about the, on Laurent Street, the overpass, I call it by Mrs. Behrds, but Mrs. Behrds has no longer been there for years. There is a small section of one-way street right next to parallel Laurent. A resident was asking why that was one-way. Do you, can you tell us about that?
I can. That, it's actually on both sides of Laurent there, and that is text dot right-of-way. That's not, those aren't city streets. Those are actually state, almost kind of, you consider them as frontage roads for Laurent Street there, or 185. They are one-way, one of them's one-way only south of Pine Street, and then the other one is one-way all the way from the crossover, coming back north to the intersection there. I don't, I don't know if that's Oak or Ash, but.
I think it's Ash.
Ash, I think it's Ash there.
I think it's Ash, yes.
That runs right in front of Ferguson's, which is the old Behrds, Mrs. Behrds Bakery there. But one of the reasons that's one-way is that the crosswalk itself that goes, not a crosswalk, but a drive across, there are no radiuses on that. It intersects in hard 90-degree turns, and so it would be, even though it's wide enough for two cars, it would be very unsafe for cars moving in two directions to make the corner there at the crossover, and that's the reason.
To go from that street, like to go south, you'd have to do a 180, I guess, all the way. You have to draw a picture, but.
Yeah, well, it would be hard for, not to encroach on the other lane, oncoming traffic's lane, to make that corner.
Okay. I'll visit with the resident about that some more.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question. And a constituent asked me, I know we're doing the study on the quiet zone. He says that at one time, he had brought it to another council member's attention, that sometimes, you know, the railroads, now we're having so many railroads, they park their, the chemicals right there behind Mrs. Behrds, so you don't normally see it, but sometimes there's chemicals sitting there for, you know, while the trains exchange. Can you just have them check to see if they're doing, because at one time, they were doing it outside of the city limits, and now they started doing it again there. I haven't gone by to see any, I haven't seen any, but he did tell me that it's happening again, so I don't know if that could be part of the study, or if that could be something somebody could look into.
The study's just on the crossings and making them a quiet zone. When you say chemicals, can you, is it, there are tanks that?
There are tanks that have chemicals in them.
Have chemicals, they're not putting chemicals on the side of the rail.
No, 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 but he's afraid that, you know, in case something, you know, that car could, you know, jam it, explode, or whatever it would be, you know, you got the school, you got, you know, everything around there, and it could be dangerous for that. You know, if somebody could look into it, that's all he was asking. Okay.
But Chief Tanner would be involved in that discussion, so, yeah. Okay, very good. I think that's all I had.
The hot funds?
I did have, yes, the hot funds legislative proposal there. I did ask for that to be put on. It's really a very simple, as you may or may not be aware, the state legislation involving usage of hot funds, of course, we're all very familiar with the heads and beds and all that, but it's also allowable to, for a community to amend that legislation, or to request the state legislature to amend it for a specific purpose. For example, we amended it, I guess, last session, to allow us to spend hot funds on existing sports facilities. And what I think would be a really good idea now is to ask our legislatures to amend it so that we could use that money for any new facility in the future. Now, I have no specific facility in mind. There could be, this council could come up on something in two or four years, or nothing for the next 10 years. But if we go ahead and get it amended now, that way, if this council chooses to do something, we'd be able to have that discretion with that money. And it's not uncommon, actually, the legislation's getting very long, because many cities in Texas are asking for that ability, to have a little bit more flexibility with the money. So I would like to ask them to do that. I plan on asking our House representative and our senator to submit that. And typically, and from what I have observed, it's a non-issue, it's agreed to, they don't mind that amendment, so. But there's no specific plans for it.
Would there be a response or legislation put in place by the time we have to do funds, the hot funds again, or not?
Well, I think so. I'm asking, I would like to ask them to do it this session, and, you know, we don't even have any ideas in this budget, or the next budget, for any use of it yet. That's my point. There is, unless y'all were to come up with something, but I don't see us doing anything in the near, near future. But I just want that flexibility there for the city.
Okay.
So, okay, very good. Thank you for that. Okay, if there's no further items from council, we'll move into citizens' communication. I do, anyone who wants to come up to the podium may do so now and state your name and address for the record. I do want to point out, Mr. Bob Constantine was going to be here to speak to us, but he's not here tonight, so we'll just forget about that issue. So citizens' communication is now open.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Lopez. I live at 2006 Southwest Ben Jordan. You need the zip and all that? I've been putting together my dream, and it's called Daddy's Prayer. I like to bring a special moment to kids with custom cars, motorcycles, classic trucks. I've been detailing custom cars for different publications over the years, such as Lowrider Magazine, Hot Rod, EZ Rider Magazine, B-Twin. I like to bring awareness to domestic violence, and my foundation would be called Daddy's Prayer. And my inspiration to get this together is my grandson, who's 22 months old, and I love watching him play with his little custom Hot Wheels and stuff like that, and I like to match a kid, the children in the community, to their favorite custom car or motorcycle, and treat them out for a day of fun or something, but the real thing. That's the Daddy's Prayer Foundation, and that's my dream. I've put together all the paperwork for the city. I got some brochures, and I'll be mailing this off on February 2nd to get approval for the 501(c)(3), and this is my dream. It's called Daddy's Prayer Foundation, bringing awareness about domestic balance.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And we did speak this afternoon, and Mr. Lopez and I, and you're just getting started, just coming out of the gate, and you have, I understand, a board that you're putting together.
Yes, sir, my dream team.
And you've also been in touch with Midcoast and Family Services and others, and collaboration, and, very good. Okay. You have some information to share?
Yes, sir, I brought some brochures, and I got all the paperwork for the city. Everything's ready. I already got the phone call for the registration and trademark for Daddy's Prayer. I got the tattoo.
You're serious now.
Yes, sir, this is from my grandson Luke Amos Lopez. I love you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and we'll be in touch, I'm sure.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Citizens' communication's still open, if anyone else wants to come up and speak about anything whatsoever. Okay, seeing none, we'll close citizens' communication and move into our ordinances.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending the 2014-2015 City of Victoria Environmental Services Fund budget in the amount of $35,000 to provide funding for the purchase of property adjacent to the solid waste yard on Southwest Ben Jordan, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Some move? Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item C2 is an ordinance amending Schedule 6 of Section 22-11 of the Victoria City Code related to traffic, to reduce the speed limit on portions of John Stockton Drive for the establishment of a railroad quiet zone, and to improve traffic safety through recently developed areas, repealing parts of conflicting ordinances, providing a penalty not to exceed $200, providing for enforcement, publication, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt? Second. Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Item C3 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the City of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory consisting of approximately 13.53 acres of land at the request of Ball Airport Road Development LLC, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
Let's, let's open the public hearing on C3. If anyone wants to speak to this specific item, please come forward now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Take a motion to adopt.
Second. Question? Yes, ma'am?
Was there also a variance in here that I saw?
In resolutions, we have one.
Oh, for this particular, okay. I thought there was one, okay.
No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. On the consent agenda, why don't we just approve the minutes real quick?
Sure. The D1 is the approval of minutes of the meeting on January 6th, 2015.
Will we adopt?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, D2 and D3, you want to do D2 one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, D2?
Item D2 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Charmel Garrett as city manager and declaring an effective date.
We need a resolution to get it on the floor for discussion?
No motion.
A motion, excuse me? Yeah.
Motion, we adopt D2?
Motion is second. Questions, Ms. Solis?
Okay, so the contract says that now the salary is going to go to, what was it, $187,000? Plus the $15,000 for the? The deferred compensation. It's 181, okay. And this starts in March? Okay. Okay, my question was really on the next one, so that's what I questioned.
If there's no further discussion on D2, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, D3?
D3 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Thomas Gush as city attorney and declaring an effective date.
We'll need a motion to get it on the floor.
Will we adopt D3?
Second. Okay, motion is second. Thank you. Ms. Solis, you have a question?
Okay, the question on that one is, why 4% versus the 2%?
No, I think the discussion was with the city council, so you would have to answer. Well, if it's a personnel matter, they have a right to go into executive session, is what I'm checking on. So I'll be glad to answer, but I want to give them, give you, what you asked, if 4% versus 2%, which kind of involves both.
Right, what's the logic between that?
Even though we've already, yeah.
Okay.
If your question is about the, whether or not we can go into executive session, and I have to be very careful here, because I'm giving you advice on procedures related to the Open Meetings Act and not related to the contract, because of course, the contract involves, and I can't advise you on the contract itself, but, so I want to make that very clear. But the way the Open Meetings Act works is, there is an exception that allows the governing body to go into executive session to talk about personnel matters, including this contract. And typically, as the city attorney, I advise that my clients do that, that they take personnel matters up in executive session, in order to protect those working relationships with those employees. It is the governing board's option to go into executive session, and then the employee being discussed has the option to veto that and force the discussion to be held in open. What do you prefer? What do I prefer? My preferences would be for it to be in executive session. If the board were to make that decision, I would not veto it.
Okay, because, I mean, I can give you my perception, I mean, and for the record, Ms. Solis was, you were absent our last meeting when our evaluations took place in executive session, where they're supposed to, and the remaining council did what we should do. No fault that you're asking, don't get, don't take it that way at all. So, do you guys want to go to executive session? Real quick, we can go upstairs, answer the question, and then come back and vote.
That's the appropriate thing that I believe to do.
Okay. Well, we can't go in the back, Mr. Alvarez, because that room's no longer available. We could go stand back there in the hallway, if y'all want, for a few minutes, I don't...
Yeah, because I can't walk all the way up there and come back.
Well, we can stand in the back for a few minutes.
There is, there is a small table and standing room in that, in that space back there.
I don't think it'll take too long.
No, no, I just wanted to answer to my question.
Yes, well, let's, let's excuse ourselves to executive session, and we'll go back, back there.
Sure, the city council will recess now into executive session on the 20th day of January 2015 at 5:22 PM, under the personnel exception to the Texas government, to the government, Texas Government Code.
Completed his executive session now at 5:31 PM.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, counsel. Just for clarification, I want to make one statement before we, we vote, and I think some of council wants to make a few other comments. With, with respect to the difference in compensation changes for Mr. Gush and Ms. Garrett, the 4% versus 2% had absolutely nothing to do with the performance of either individual, and I think I speak for council when I say that. We all agree that they have performed their duties admirably. We had, as a council, when we did their evaluation, some information on their peers, in other words, other city managers and other city attorneys, and how much they got paid in similar communities, and we reviewed that and felt that, you know, we'd like to keep them in a proper market range, and after looking at that information, we felt we needed to, it was, it was a market adjustment is what it was, we needed to bump up the salary of the attorney by 4%, just a little bit more rather than the city manager, to keep them both in a proper market range. Does that make sense, counsel? Is that, okay, and we want to make sure that was well-understood. I do know that, you know, when staff makes decisions about compensation to their employees, it's tied to performance, they pay for performance, et cetera. In this case, this really was not. We feel that they equally have done their jobs very well, so. Counsel, you have other comments?
Mr. Mayor, just had one comment. I think it's been a very good year for Thomas. I'm going to vote against the 4% raise, mainly because I believe in taking a very cautious approach when it comes to the largest salaries of our city employees, and so, nothing personal.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so we have motion is second, no further discussion. All those in favor of D3, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, nay, whatever.
So.
I understand that to be a 3-2.
Is that good enough?
3-2 in favor, that's good enough for me.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Let's move into resolutions now.
All right, item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the city, excuse me, with the Victoria Livestock Show for approximately 4.9 acre tract of property near the Victoria Community Center in exchange for improvements to the pole barn and other considerations, and declaring an effective date.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Is there any communication or information we need to hear? I see someone approaching the desk.
Alex?
Okay. Oh, you're with the community center, you're...
Alex, I'm sorry.
Alex, I'm sorry.
Buskin with the, he's the community center director.
Tell us who, yes, and we have met.
Yes, sir.
You're out of uniform, you usually don't wear that.
I dressed up a little bit today, yes, sir.
Well, is it appropriate, maybe a quick review of what's happening?
Sure.
You want to tell us what's going on, or?
Sure, sure. The Livestock Show has leased that tract of property since 1985. Initially, they leased it to build the pole barn. The lease was renewed in 2003 to, they wanted to do some infrastructure improvements to the facility. These included an enclosed animal washout space, installation of rolling doors to the pole barn, as well as a concrete path between the pole barn and the J.C. Hall. And so their lease has come up again, and they would like to do further infrastructure improvements to the facility.
Very good, very good. And that's a $1 a year lease, and as far as the improvements we do, Parks looks them over, staff, just keeps an eye on what they're doing, and okay?
Yes, sir. The, any new improvements, Parks and Recreation Director would have to approve.
Okay. I know it's, they are a wonderful organization and do a lot for our community, so. Counsel, any other questions?
Did we get the liability insurance policy? Have we received that document, or no?
I, I don't believe that we've received that document yet. We would be, we would hold off on delivering the executed copy until we get the final...
Usually, sometimes it's concluded in some of our contracts. I didn't see it, okay.
Okay. Anything further? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase approximately 4.25 acres of land that is adjacent to the city property on Southwest Ben Jordan Street in the amount of $35,000, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E2?
Second.
Okay, thank you, motion is second. Is there a discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes, thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 13-941(c) of the Victoria City Code related to municipal utilities and services, which requires the extension of a sanitary sewer main when the property is more than 75 feet from an existing sewer main, to a property located at 119 County Road, owned by M&amp;M Family Partnership, LLC, Limited, and declaring an effective date.
Some move? Motion here? Second over there, okay. Any questions? Short, did you have anything to offer?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay.
The variance is only that they're going to keep their septic tank, right? Everything else, they're going to use the water for the city to build a new building and everything else?
That's right.
Okay, and I saw they're going through city specs and everything.
Everything else will meet code.
Very good. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Okay, city manager reports.
Okay.
Who's up first?
Jerry is, and I'm sure he's waiting on me to say something, and I'll get my thoughts together. So, early December, we brought forth a report on this aquifer storage, and at the time, we, you know, said that we would need to come back in a few weeks and talk about if council's interested in us moving into Phase 2.
Point of order, we're skipping an item.
Okay.
We're skipping E4.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would say we did put out the changed one, and I didn't have it earlier, I didn't do it.
All right.
Thank you for the clarification, let's do E4.
I don't have a copy of it in my, oh, I do, I'm sorry, here it is. I do, I'm sorry. I don't have the updated agenda that includes E4, and so I skipped right over it. E4 is a resolution appointing a member to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and declaring an effective date. Thank you.
Okay, what do we, that's the legal version, what do we need to do here?
What we've got is a resolution appointing, the resolution's currently drafted to appoint Mr. Darryl Serrano to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. As you'll remember, this is the board where we added positions from each of the four districts, and this was Ms. Solis's appointment to this position. So, we have the name already filled in the blank, unless there's discussion of that, all that we need is a motion and a second to approve, and then a vote.
Okay.
Some move.
Second.
Second, is he here by chance?
I don't think so.
Mr. Serrano, okay, I was going to apologize, too, and we almost missed it, so, all right. Is there any discussion about this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Okay, so Jerry can get up now.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, well, thank you.
Please do.
So, in December, what we said we would need to do is come back and see if council wishes for us to move into phase two, so we can put that in the CIP planning process when we come back in March, and so I think Jerry's going to do just a brief overview as a reminder, since it's been six weeks at least.
Yes. And that's what I'd like to do, is just kind of give you a high-level overview of what we discussed that night, not getting into the technical aspects of it, we did plenty of that. The objectives of why are we looking at ASR? Well, we're looking at seasonal storage to meet peak demands as we continue to grow as a city. Long-term storage for reliability during drought, and of course, we've been through drought these last several years and have seen some of the effects of that. The drought is projected to continue, but it's also looking at future droughts as we go on into our future as a city and as a region. Deferring expansion or construction of wastewater treatment plant. ASR water, aquifer storage and recovery water, water that's stored underground, that has been treated to drinking water levels, is water that folks are using in other places now. Rather than doing concrete and steel expansion of their water plant, you treat that water with your existing infrastructure, store it under the ground, sometimes even using it, treating it at night and using it that next day during your peak demand periods, especially during the summertime. And so, that would defer having to expand our water treatment plant and having to do that concrete and steel work at some point. And for emergency storage, if something were to happen to our water supply, and we have multiple sources of water, but always looking at that extra backup to the backup to the backup, we would have that water stored to drinking water standards underground, and actually would have adequate storage to get us by for quite a while if something like that were to ever happen. Looking at disinfection byproduct reduction, as we, as the Environmental Protection Agency and TCQ continues to tighten those standards over time, one of the things that we can do with this water is to mix it with some of our existing water and be able to mitigate some of the byproducts that come with disinfection, and being able to meet those standards without having to spend extra money, again, on equipment or higher levels of technologies in order to be able to do that. The hydrogeological conclusions were that we have excellent data confidence in what we have. We have a lot of data on our municipal wells, data on other wells. We went to, reached out to the Victoria County Groundwater District, which is one of our partners in this project, got quite a bit of hydrological data from them, and that conclusion was that this area is very well-suited for ASR. This is a confined sand aquifer. It's very similar to what San Antonio Water Systems is using in the Carrizo-Wilcox, and that project has been very successful for some time, and what they do with theirs is take water from the Edwards during those months when that water is available, store it then in the Carrizo-Wilcox, and then bring it back. As an example, right now would be a time where we could take water, using our existing river water rights, treat that through our water plant, be able to be storing it for that time during the summer when we might need it, or whatever else that might be, whether we'd be looking at water plant expansion or whatever. Being able to store that water over that period of time, and having it, not just saving it up for a drought someday, but also being able to use that water on a fairly regular basis, and we would want to do that. The total dissolved concentrations in our area are below 1,000 milligrams per liter, which means we are below brackish water levels, and so, it's fairly easy to get our bubble put in there. We don't have any evidence of potential contamination, that's always a concern when you're taking a water source, putting it somewhere where you can't see it, so to speak, but with the sand aquifer that we have, we don't see that potential for that, any kind of contamination like that occurring. Migration rate will vary with city well operations, in other words, we can control that migration rate. Water moves, you put it underground, where does it go? In a sand-confined aquifer, it moves inches per year. In the Edwards, for instance, it can move thousands of feet a day, and so a karst aquifer, a lot of times, is not very well-suited for this, but we're not a karst, we're a sand aquifer, and so, we have a very high level of confidence that if we put the water in the ground, it will indeed be there. El Paso is doing this, Kerrville, San Antonio in Texas, but there's locations across the world and across the United States that have a lot, this is not new technology by any stretch of the imagination. The cost that we're looking at for the phase two testing program, which would actually be an ASR project, but we call it a testing program, because when you look at the total cost of the program, we would want to phase it in so that we have a higher level of confidence before we make the full financial investment, would be $3.6 million. The total capital cost and total project cost of a complete ASR project, which would be some years in the making, would be $21.1 million. Annual cost is 1.5, cleaning debt service and O&M. Unit cost is $56 per acre foot, that's fairly cheap water in today's market, it's very cheap water. Adding in the incremental cost of treatment and storage, you're looking at still $192 per acre foot of water that's ready to be used that day. And looking at one more slide, just what would we get for this phase two? It would be a new ASR well right at our Victoria Surface Water Treatment Plant. We would be retrofitting one well at Plant 3, well 14 at Plant 3, putting in a monitoring well and putting a total of three monitoring wells in, and then the wireline core for that. And what we're looking at is, again, we went over this in very great detail in December. We're looking at capital improvement plan coming up. What we would like from council is not a commitment financially, because we're not there yet, but is this a project that, having reviewed the information that you got in December and this recap today, is this something that you would like to see us go forward with? To bring back to you for consideration financially at some point. It's a project that takes our existing infrastructure, and that includes investment that we've made in surface water rights, being able to leverage those surface water rights so that we can get the most use out of those, and actually be able to perhaps work with other entities in our area like the Port of Victoria. It would free up some of the rights that we have so that we could encourage economic development with confidence in that area, and make use of some of the rights that we have that have a diversion point still at the port. Thomas has been talking with the attorney from the port about that. We've just needed some more information on where we were at. This helped us with some of that and gives us, I think, a path forward going into the future to help stabilize, further stabilize our water availability that we have in this city, as well as being able to, for us to be able to reach out regionally and work cooperatively with other agencies to further economic development.
So, you're effectively asking just to put this on the list of projects?
Yes, yes, sir.
Hopefully, some budget year, I guess sooner rather than later, we actually do, and you're talking about phase two, just the 3.1 million.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't see any harm in keeping it all alive and putting it on the list, counsel.
Absolutely. We've got to look to the future for our water issues and continue to make those efforts to do so in any way we can do so. To sit back and do nothing would be a bad thing to do.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First phase, is that, when you're talking about phase two, 3.6 million, that obviously includes the phase one, or?
Phase one is completed. Phase one was the study phase, and that was $270,000, $135,000 of that was paid for by the Water Development Board, and they have reviewed this project, and are very in favor of us proceeding with this. They think it's a good project, they think it's good for Texas.
I'd like to proceed, but also bring us the financing options, what's the best one?
We will do that during the capital improvements.
During the CIP?
We'll put this on that five-year rolling list, and so when we come back in March, yes, sir, you will see that in that, so we'll show where we can fit it in with the funding.
Not just our resources, but you've got these other markets out there, other potential grants or what have you, well, maybe not grants, but financing.
It's finance.
GVRA, Port of Auto. I hope we could have some of those alternatives to look at a little bit more closely.
Well, when we get to the financing part of this.
Are we going to carry this whole load, or we may have other partners, I guess?
I know what you're saying. Gilbert and I can look at that, you're talking about, yes.
And I can tell you that we will pursue grants for these types of projects, and do I know of any grant money on the table right now? No, but we will certainly, as a staff, look at grant opportunities.
Well, there may be grants, but there's some better market, you know, just beyond the public bond market scenario. What's the water development, some of these water development funds, that, those scenarios play out favorably?
We've looked at those in the past to see if it's favorable or not, so we will explore all options.
Okay, good.
And the legislature is in session, and they are in favor of anything that would help relieve some of the drought conditions in Texas, wherever they exist, and so, we don't know anything at the moment, but we do know they're favorable towards these types of things that would help alleviate drought conditions.
Sheriff Mel, if I could just mention one or two additional things, since Councilman Al Feska brought it up. Representative Larson, there's a group of us with TWCA that got together and have been working over a year now on some legislation to answer some questions about ASR. Representative Larson introduced that legislation that we gave him last week, and that does clarify some of the permitting questions and that type of thing, and these types of things, when they, when they look at the Water Development Board's funding and what they might have for grants to encourage these projects, that's certainly going to be helpful for that. And so, again, we don't know what Water Development Board budget's going to look like at this point, but there are folks at House and Senate Natural Resources that are in favor of what the state can do to encourage this, so.
Very good.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you did the presentation last time, you said one of these, what do you call them, ACRs or ARS?
ASR.
ASR. They were to help with in case of a drought, and they would go like for a 10-year period? Was that what I remember, or for a certain amount of time?
Yes, ma'am. It, when you look at a drought of records, you're usually looking at about a seven-year period, and we're about in the middle of one of those right now. And so, if we were to implement the ASR project today, would it be something that would get us through the rest of this drought? It would help, but we wouldn't have enough storage in place, and that's one of the reasons that you do this. Droughts come in cycles, we will see another drought. Climatologically, they're predicting that we'll probably see them more often than we have, but it does take time to get all of this implemented. But yes, this is something that, in conjunction with our other water resources, we wouldn't live off of ASR for seven years, but during those summer periods, then yes, it would be something that would get us through that once we got the storage in place.
Okay, so that leads me to the next question. If we're in the middle of a drought right now, and they come in cycles, do you suggest that we get prepared for the next cycle? Because, like you say, it's a little too late right now, but how much time are we talking about? Do we have enough time to be able to come up with the funding for it and get to the different phases?
Yes and no. That's, that's almost, well, it is like predicting the weather, because basically, that's what you're doing. One of the things that we want to accomplish with this ASR project is getting that confidence, getting it in place and seeing how it works, which will help us with designing the second phase of it. And so, in that way, the sooner the better. But is it something that, in balancing that with other capital improvement needs that we have, is it something that has to be done today? No, it doesn't. And so, and that's something that, when Lynn comes back to you with the Capital Improvements Program, is looking at how all those things fit in there. You know, as a water planner, I want to do it today, but there are many, many needs that we have, and this is something that'll help us going completely into the future, really. This isn't a project that you do, and then it goes away in 10 years. And we're in it, and it's going to be helpful, but it will take time to implement. And say we get through the drought in the next year or two, is it something that, eh, we don't need to worry about that? No, because it's something that is going to recur, and also looking at other needs, water treatment plant expansion and those types of things. It's not just a drought solution at all.
There's a big economic development component, too. Going forward in the future, the cost of water is more of a factor, and some industries locating here, cheap water is a draw, so, absolutely. It's a lot of good reasons. It's just choices this council has to make when we get to the CIP.
Staff recommends we move forward with the phase two when we can afford it and put it in the CIP, so that's why you will see it. It'll be on that five-year rolling.
Okay.
And as usual, it's always just competing with other things we need to get done, but I feel like this is kind of one of those base needs that we really need to be addressing, or else we have to get a big wad of money at some point to address it all at once. It's always very hurtful. But we can address it going forward and get this to work, and it would be a very good thing to have. It would help us protect our reliability of our water supply. We want a real high 90% level on our water supply. We've got a three-legged school on it now, and that we've got, we can go to the wells, we can go to the reservoir. It'd be nice to have four-legged, too. The good part about an ASR also is you have almost no loss from evaporation, and a regular above-ground storage thing, like a dam or an earthen dam or something like that, is you can have 80% to 90% evaporation of your water, yet you still pay for the water to get it in there. So, it's not necessarily, it's got a lot of positives about it. There's also, nothing is perfect, but it'd be a good project to go for, and I hope council will do so.
Okay. No further comments, thank you, thank you, Jerry.
So, yes, it came up last time, and so, Colby's going to do a Parks update on projects that are going on.
It just, we cannot open public comment back at this time, sorry. You talk to me after the meeting.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. This is a quick reference guide on some of the projects that's going on in the Parks Department. Mayor asked about Grover's Bend and a couple others, and so I was going to update the four major projects that we have going on at this time. The Grover's Bend parking lot, that is in construction phase right now. We are clearing out a lot of the underbrush and things to that nature. We have leveled off the parking area and are putting granite gravel on. Right now, we're waiting on our second load of granite gravel to come. We are going to be able to, in addition to this project, to be able to build a walking trail through Grover's Bend, a granite gravel walking trail that will connect to our current sidewalk. It'll be about a quarter, three-quarters of a mile trail around, and so it'll connect from sidewalk to sidewalk around that facility.
Wonderful.
So, that's included in this project. We're hoping to be done, will be done with the parking lot and the others, hoping around spring break time is when that'll be done. The parking lot will be done and will be open. We may still be working on the walking trail, but we will have the parking lot open by spring break.
That's our beach down there.
Yes.
So, for reference to those who know what we're talking about, where the goats cleared out.
I was going to say, the goats are gone?
Yeah, the goats aren't there right now, they're over by the pump house.
That is wonderful news. I didn't know, I didn't realize you were doing that trail, so, wonderful.
The splash pad, the splash pad is in design phase right now. We just met with the landscape architect on that. He's coming back with a different design and firming up that cost estimate for us. I hope to bring that back to council to approve at the second meeting in February, I think is the target date that we're shooting for.
What's the location?
Sir.
Excuse me, what's the location?
The location will be, if, for a reference, when you're driving into the community center park, going down to the pool, there's that little circle drive right there. It'll be at that circle drive back towards the pool.
Okay.
And then we will demo the pool in a future budget. The kayak rental, we are working with the vendor as far as getting that building up and running, getting the, all the different items in there from our side that we can help him with. He has expressed his desire to have a grand opening April the first. That is his date, that's not something we've put on him. I know that's when the contract, when he starts paying us, but he can open at any time, but that's his date that he's looking at is April the first.
That'll be right next to the zoo in that, I call it concession building, and those of us who've lived here many, many years, I don't know if y'all have ever seen it open. I don't recall it ever being used in my lifetime, maybe many, well, when I was real little. So, I'm very pleased to see this usage, and, what are you grinning about over there? You remember it being used.
I'm old enough to remember when Noah built the ark.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good news.
The last project is Riverside Pavilion. Right now, if you, if council remembers, we went to a contract that was for the architect to have a conceptual drawing, and then go into, if approved by council, go into a construction. documents. The, we've met with Raleigh McCoy. They are looking at having budget numbers to us by the end of January, and hopefully back in that second meeting in February, we'll have something for you to decide whether or not we want to move forward with the construction drawings.
Was it the area where the train used to go around? Is that the?
I'm not sure where the train went around.
That's where the concession stands.
Well, the concession stand.
It's across from the train station.
Riverside Center, what we're calling Riverside Pavilion is.
Okay, okay, I understand now. Convention Center, okay.
We're just calling it Riverside Pavilion.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about the kayak. That is by where the tracks were.
Yes.
There's still some tracks there, but anyway.
That's all the projects I have to update you on.
I think last time Tom had a question about your new piece of equipment.
Oh, we did get in the forestry machine. I haven't been able to drive it as much as I want to. I'm trying to get out of the office to do, to drive this piece of equipment, but it attaches on to our Bobcat. And this thing, if you haven't visited Grover's Bend in a while, please come to my office and I'll take you down there, or if you go on a weekend. There is a dramatic difference in just the week and a half, two weeks that we've had this machine. It will clear, you know, a tree that's six inches wide in a matter of five seconds and go down to just, you know, mulch. And it's really been something that's been a great tool for us to use, and we're really excited about it. It is a neat machine.
The goats are really good clearing the undergrowth out, but they're not eating the small trees or anything.
Yeah, they can't get the small tree, willow trees or the thorns and things of that nature, but it's amazing how it is.
Are we saving the mulch for the rose garden?
It doesn't get quite that fine, but we do mulch and we use our own mulch and a lot of that stuff, so yes.
Very good. Well, thank you. I think Riverside Park's going to be very exciting this year, and I hope if any parks commissioners are watching, you know, I do thank them for what they do to come together and kind of talk about some of these projects.
Thank you.
Derek has the last city manager report to talk about priorities for CDBG.
Good evening. All right. Tonight, we wanted to talk a little bit about the new consolidated plan we'll be working on this spring, staff will, and kind of get a little bit of direction from council on what y'all see, any changing in priorities before we get too far into that plan. So just real quickly, while we're doing this, because HUD requires us to, we've talked about this a little bit before, he who has the money makes the rules, so HUD is making us, we're getting the money from HUD, and HUD requires us to do a five-year plan, and that five-year plan establishes what our vision and priorities are going to be over the next five years. There is, as with all of our plans, there is a community or citizen participation element. So over the next several weeks and coming months, we'll be reaching out to our partners and other social service agencies, and of course, the public at large, to get their input on what the plan's priorities for that, those federal dollars spending should be. Just real quickly, some of the basics. As you know, this is our, the city's primary source for addressing community development needs and our low, for our low-income families and our low-income neighborhoods. Because the city's over 50,000 population, we get this money annually. Currently, the city's received, the current fiscal year in, our grant allocation was a little over $561,000. Of course, there are those national priorities that's got to principally benefit low- or moderate-income people, aid in the elimination of slum and blight, and address activities that are an urgent threat to health or safety. Of course, the money has to benefit families that are below 80% of median income. You can see those income limits on there for a family of four, under $43,350 would be the maximum that someone can make and receive benefit from the funds. As you can see on the map there, those are the neighborhoods that would be eligible for the funds, and those are determined where at least 51% of the residents are low to moderate income. HUD has changed how they do that, if detail in here, that, starting with the 2010 census, census no longer collected income information. It's now collected through a different method through the census where they are collecting that annually through what they call the American Community Survey, and for Victoria's population, that's a five-year rolling average. So what the simplest terms means that these yellow highlighted areas potentially can change every year. Staff has been used to, after the census comes out, going, okay, there's our map for the next 10 years. That's no longer the case. So, and the staff was a little surprised, that very top northernmost yellow highlighted area is bounded by Navarro, Salem, and John Stockbauer. That's Castle Hills West, and there are a number of apartment complexes in there that I guess are contributing to that area income. We're not used to seeing our ability to go that far north. Anyway, as I said, those are subject to change annually, so it'll make a little bit of a challenge as we try to address things like parks and sidewalks and whatnot. But just to give you a real quick rundown of funding history, city started receiving CDBG funds in 1982. Obviously, the majority of that was spent on large infrastructure projects up until 1991. Then in 1992, there was a little bit of diversification in the spending. Still, large infrastructure projects were being done. During this time, the city's allocation was close to $1 million a year, which led us work with Public Works to do, you know, some large street improvement projects and some utility projects. Started getting into the, some housing activities during this time period. And then when we got to 2001, which is again a change in a new consolidated plan, our allocations start, we started to see that allocation going down considerably, and there was a shift, because of that, there was a shift away from large infrastructure projects towards a significant amount of money going into housing rehabilitation and down payment assistance programs. You can see on there. And then the last time we did the consolidated plan, which was five years ago, there was a shift away from housing to focus on some public service and public facility needs. The maximum we're allowed to fund public services is at 15%, so the city's been maxing that out. And y'all are well aware of the larger, I assume you're well aware of the larger public facility projects we've done with partnerships with Mid Coast Family Services and their Women's Crisis Center. We've done several large allocations with Boys and Girls Club to upgrade their facility, and of course, we're currently in the last phase of the Gulf Bend facility as well. So these are the eligible activities that we've currently been providing some level of funding for, public facilities, down payment assistance. This current year, we're not really doing much with neighborhood cleanup or beautification. As I said, we're still funding public services. This year, we're funding a portion of the splash pad that Colby just spoke about, and we've done some infrastructure, smaller infrastructure projects like filling in sidewalk gaps, transit shelters, that sort of thing, some street lighting in some of the neighborhoods. So just real quickly, staff recommendations are just that. We would certainly like to see council continue to fund the public service agencies up to that maximum, and then continue funding at least until we finish one crossing that program. We currently fund the equivalent of one salary for a cut enforcement officer. We actually fund two halves. It gives us some flexibility there. And then we'd like to continue working on doing park upgrades in the eligible areas. So with that, here are my questions for you. Are there some specific changes you'd like to see? What are your thoughts? Are there some specific ideas or projects that council would like to see implemented in the next five years?
Do you have any more parks that you're going to be working on since we've got a couple of them done last year?
I don't have a specific park in mind. There's a number of parks that are eligible, and I probably have to defer to Colby to see what might be next. We're doing, as I said, we're doing the splash pad this year. We did two phases of playground equipment in Hopkins Park over the previous two years, and we did upgrades in Meadow Lane before that, and I don't know if you've got, something that.
What our plans are now is to go back to those parks, and we've really been able to focus on the playground structures, is to go back to those parks and start looking out, is to widen that range as far as sidewalks around it, different things to that nature inside each one of those parks that are eligible. And so, yes, we are continually going to use this as much as we can. What's the last? 15 to 20 years?
Did we get lighting on Meadow Lane natural? Remember, we talked about it?
I remember we talked about it. I thought we did it, but I really will honestly have to speak with Darla to see if.
Okay.
I know that was talked about, and I'm never going to put a light on that back pole.
To the back, something about the back, it needed lighting down there.
I can check on that. Or please.
I thought they did do the lighting.
I thought we did. If you're, if you're aware that it's not working, let me know.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Get that addressed.
Oh, I have a question now that we're talking about lighting. If we're running around, I mean, I'm coming out of my office and the light is on, and it's broad daylight, and at night, it's not on, so it's weird.
Streetlight?
The streetlight.
AEP.
AEP, just give you the street number.
We pay that bill, so.
Yeah, no. If you can just let us know either the street number or the location.
Okay.
They have a sensor on them. It's probably, there's a sensor on top. Some of my staff probably knows, and it's supposed to be off during daylight. Needs to be replaced.
They also have a very friendly web-based AEP that you can go out and they say that they'll repair it within three days.
Okay.
There's a four-digit poll number that's on there. If you have that poll number, you can go straight to AEPTexas.com, I think it is.
I think, I think one of the numbers might be pulled off because the next poll has got three numbers, but this one only has two. So I thought, okay, if I give them just a two-digit number, will they be able to find it?
You give them, give them the adoration with those two numbers.
They'll come out during the day and they'll see it's on. They'll know which one, in a case like that.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Mr. Mayfield?
Yes, sir.
The, in regards to the Children's Discovery Museum, based upon that map, do they fit into the new economic?
We've looked specifically before, as they were working through that. Just because it's in the area doesn't necessarily mean that it's an eligible activity, and if I remember right, we discussed that specific project with HUD, and since it doesn't principally, primarily benefit low-income children, I think we were very limited, if at all, of what we could fund on them. I think we were asked that question sometime within the last year.
What do you mean, they give scholarships or gave certain things?
There may be a programming activity that we could do with them, but I don't think anything on the facility is.
But on the service side, possibly.
On the service side, yeah.
Probably the best thing is to have Ms. Dix come visit, set up an appointment and visit with Darla.
Yes, and there'll be a, Darla will schedule.
I've assumed you'd do that. No, I would just.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Darla will have a public outreach with all the public service providers, so anyone and all can come to that meeting. It's not, I don't think we've got that nailed down yet, but it'll be sometime in April usually.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate what we're doing here with this funding and what we've been doing. Couple of standouts for me, the Boys and Girls Club, the Food Bank have been, you know, we really appreciate that. The only thing I'd like to add to the mix for more discussion, if feasible, is additional sidewalks. No, Mayor, that's something you've emphasized. And more, the covers and the benches for transit. And of course, they have to be within the eligible areas, I understand.
Now that those are moving around, that might, this might give us an opportunity to go and pick up a few.
We've added a new route, and there's probably a lot of other openings, opportunities there to put more covers. We need to come up with a new list and see if they fall within the target area.
Mr. Alvarez, I can tell you that we're internally working on kind of a master plan for sidewalks, so to determine where there's, it's already developed and we've got gaps, so we can start looking at what's out there and then try to start funding some of those gaps, so.
I know we have, we certainly have challenges in that area.
Absolutely, we do.
Frustrating.
In light of some of the pedestrian vehicle accidents, I would hope we could, for safety purposes alone, begin to maybe chip away at that. I don't know if this funding source is it, but.
This can certainly help you with that, and then if, in planning, if staff knows there's going to be, we need to set aside whatever it would be, I'll just make up a number, $100,000 for that, then we know that going in when we're meeting with some of these nonprofits, hey, there's, this is what's going to be left after we've done parks and sidewalks or whatever it would be.
Just as a point, was there any of the pedestrian accidents that occurred, were any of them due to the lack of sidewalks?
Well, I don't know that. You know, you cross the street, of course, you're crossing the street.
Perhaps a misuse thereof, I'm not sure.
But regardless, there's still a lack of sidewalks for our pedestrians throughout the community.
I mean, yes, there is a lack. We do need to address that. I didn't know if any of the accidents might have been related, lack of sidewalk.
We're not terribly pedestrian-friendly, but we're all working that direction. I think everyone here would agree on that. I bet we could probably, with about $100 million, finish all, they're just so expensive. It just blows me away, you know, for years, we would carve out $50,000 to go out and do some spots, and then we would, y'all, some of y'all were here, we, you know, okay, let's do this little gap and this little gap. It adds up over years. I encourage you. I don't think we're doing that in this current budget.
Well, you know, if you ask me to say, well, which ones do you want, well, I start with the schools first.
Yeah, right.
What's feasible, and then work from there.
I feel like we need that master plan with a design that shows us where we're going to budget and move forward.
I would, yeah, model it after your street plan, you know, where you grade the streets, you locate all inventory, the whole city, where's the highest priority, and make some objective or subjective observations about foot traffic. And you see, we see all driving down the road and see those little trails in the field. Obviously, there's a lot of foot traffic there, so try to give it some weight to it. Anyway.
Well, and then as, for lots that aren't developed, you know, as that development occurs, it's that owner's responsibility to build the sidewalk connect. We're focusing on developed area, going back and filling in those gaps.
Is that that parcel plan? Is it different?
No, sir, that's more of a trails.
That's the trail plan?
And we will bring that back, I think we've got it on the 3rd, February the 3rd, to do a review of that. It is a connectivity issue, you know, with trails and trying to get people to the parks.
Right, okay.
So I guess it could be sidewalks.
Multi-use paths.
It's pedestrian.
Yeah, yeah.
Pedestrian traffic, non-vehicle traffic, okay.
Okay, so if I'm understanding right, we're kind of generally okay with same?
I believe we've been making some good progress as well.
Very good.
Let's don't change the boat too much.
Okay.
Turn the sails a little if you need to.
Okay. That helps tremendously. Thank you so much.
Actually, maybe here. Let me, let's have that discussion. Okay, that concludes your city manager report.
Yes.
We do have one item for executive session. I don't, I don't want to make, ask Ms. Lee to walk upstairs next door. It's a very brief executive session, I believe, so we could excuse everyone and just do it right here.
All right, just go in the room for a few minutes.
There'll be no, no discussion afterwards, nothing to convey. Y'all want to go next door, or?
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
Well, we're trying to make it easy on you.
We don't have any announcement afterward, he's welcome to stay, but we'll be out in a minute. Go ahead.
All right, the city council will assess for executive session on the 20th day of January 2015 at 6:20 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that the deliberation in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party.